For the meeting for the March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, Montesereno, regular city council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to the council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, we are being used to allow public participation with the regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report to people who are just being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hands when recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from telephone will be able to listen only and cannot provide feedback or public comments. Lastly, when not, we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
It is seven oh one. I'll call the meeting of the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Montesereno to order at seven oh one P M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance and those characters Montesereno believes Chief Fields has graciously agreed to lead us. Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Turner. You. Councilmember Inaki.
Present.
Councilmember Mecha check.
Present.
Vice Mayor Craig.
Here.
Mayor Volshino.
Present.
Thank you.
Orders of the day, do we have any orders of the day and changes? No. Announcements, any council member announcements today? Presentations, we have no presentations. Oral communications. The, this item on the agenda gives people the chance to, to address the council on any subject that is not on the agenda. So, I'm sure everybody has seen the agenda and I know that some of you are here to discuss the flock cameras. That topic will also come up during the discussion of the goal settings that it will for the next fiscal year. So if you would like to talk about flock, the flock cameras, please do that at a time where we discuss it at the during the goal setting sessions. Is there anybody who wants to discuss anything else, something that's not on the agenda or not related to the flock cameras?
Actually, it's related to this is the topic I come up and talk. This is the topic I come up and talk. Yeah, actually, the topic is related to the flock camera. That is also related to that guest incident over the weekend. Yeah, that's why I would not ask for a new agenda item for the next time.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you. Anybody else who has any subject other than the agenda or flock cameras? Anybody online?
No hands are raised.
I have flock cameras.
Mr. James.
No cameras.
Flock cameras will be discussed during the goal setting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online?
No hands are raised.
So it was oral communications and written communications. I know we have received several on the flock cameras. All right. And I'm sure all the council members have received those comments, written comments. We're moving through the agenda very quickly here. Next topic on the agenda is the consent calendar. There are two topics on the consent calendar. The first one is approval of the minutes of the March fifth regular city council meeting. Today, we will treat the consent calendar into two parts. Is there a motion to approve the first part of the consent calendar, this is of the last meeting?
Motion to approve?
Can we open, open our comments?
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience here wishes to comment on the minutes of the March fifth meeting?
No hands are raised.
No, what, no, right? In that case, that was a motion, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that was seven minutes, five zero zero. Next item on the consent calendar is approval of the warrant list dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to, sorry, does anybody want to comment on the warrant list? We're in chambers, anybody on right? There a motion to approve the warrant list?
Motion to approve? Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any abstains? Abstains, so we have four yeses.
One is safe.
No, no, and one abstained. Public hearings, we have no public hearings because we know unfinished business, but we do have some new business. The third item, other new business is item number three, which is authorize councilmember Mecha check to represent the city on issues related to the San Jose water general rate increase. Is U one six eight W affecting water rates for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven? Is there a staff report of this?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, this evening is a measure to, for council to allow councilmember Mecha check to represent the city of Montesereno in front of the C P U C regarding the rate increases every three years. San Jose Water has to notify the C P U C, get kind of their blessing with their proposal on their rate increases. They, they still have an application. And the current proposal requires, or the current ask, I should say, from San Jose Water to the C P C is a eleven point eleven percent increase in twenty twenty five, a three point nine nine percent increase in twenty twenty six, and a four point four nine percent increase in twenty twenty seven. In twenty twenty one, councilmember Mecha check represented and presented, and I believe testified in front of the C P U C on behalf of the residents of Montesereno. There was quite a bit of interest at the time outcry from the public because of the water rates. So I think it's because of his experience and testifying before, I, the staff is making a recommendation with the council's blessing that he go and represent the public again. There hasn't been a lot of correspondence from the public this time. Last time, there seemed to be more interest coming out of the drought years, where perhaps the last couple of years, we've had a lot of rain and stuff. So however, if you look at the, the proposed rate increases, they are substantial. So I think it's good to go and do a protest vote on behalf of our city as well as, as others to the San Jose water increases, proposed increases. I'm available for questions, but that, that sums it up. And if councilmember Mecha check likes to share some of the experience about his past testimony, that, that might help add some color to this as well.
Thank you. Would you like to call him?
Sure. As city manager Leonardi said, I spoke on behalf of the city of Montesereno previously, and I can't just get up and speak without authorization by council. Last, in the last general rate case, it was several months into the rate case. So that's why there was more public knowledge of what's going on. There was a news clip last night on ABC seven on the rate case that San Jose Water is putting forth. So it's starting to get a little bit of attention and it, it will last through until December. There's something that they have that's called a public participation hearing, and members of the public are allowed to say anything. But if you are an elected official, you can speak and there's no time limit. So with the approval of council, I would like to speak on behalf of the residents of the city of Montesereno.
Council members, any comment?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to ask a question of our city attorney. The, and this is a general question, not just this, this, this group, San Jose Water, but, but also for raising rates on, for example, people with swimming pools and large yards, which we had that the last time. What I wanted to do is, is there any way we can make sure that before we vote in that committee for the C P U C, because the San Jose Water is now requesting twenty-two percent increase in its water rates over the next three years? Okay? And surcharges also for unforeseen expenses. And I want to be sure that before we make any commitments to them, that we at least notify our residents, we go out consciously and transparently tell them what's going on. We can put it on next door, we, we can have letters from staff. Is that, is that something we could do?
We could. I don't know the time period, if there's a sign to get that done before the hearings or if they would accept comments after that date. But it is something that we could notify the residents as it would impact all of them.
I mean, that, that would be helpful for our residents. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions?
I guess you could question the comments right now.
Comment, questions?
Looks like it's next up. I have a question.
Okay, any questions? I actually do have a question. What, what would your general message?
My general message would be that with San Jose Water Company, it gets fairly complex. But in the last general rate case, they were mixing corporate expenses with rate payer expenses. And I objected to that strongly because we shouldn't be paying corporate expenses for San Jose Water Company. The other thing is, is that they were asking for increases for a certain number of replacement pipeline. And they've got a history of asking for one percent or twenty-five miles of pipeline, and then they never do that. So, you know, they get it into the rate case, but they don't follow through with that. And you have to follow it for, for a few years to actually see what's going on. But those are two examples.
Thank you. So unless there are any other questions, I would like to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody here in chambers who wants to comment on this topic? No, nobody?
No one is raising. No one is raising.
So let's bring it back to council. Any comments?
Yeah, basically, I wanted to thank councilmember Mecha check for participating last time also. They're really good. To remember, last time, those were, was being acquired by somebody else. And really, really was, we were getting ourselves funded compared to the boss, I suppose. The P U C works in their own way and they don't really listen to the legislature in some cases. It's really important and also a good suggestion to let the residents know. I think we may also be able to use this to get the city association behind us. And maybe the mayors and managers think, well, you guys meet with them outside the C P. If some of them are willing to go on board. So some, some kind of status thing that councilmember Mecha check had said us that we could use to, you know, put it on the, I'd like to put it on the city's association agenda and see what kind of support we can get. And you may move on the waterboard of the other cities. That is good that they, that councilmember Mecha check can move on the board on the cities. I think that would be good to put together because these guys, they're and the way they work when they put a pipe somewhere. I know in, in my house, we had a common pipe and San Jose Water had to give us a separate pipeline. And they charged two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it. But we had to pay that and then they gave us a bond back that we got it paid back over two thousand dollars a year for the next thirty years. So they, they get the money from the residents in a lot of cases. But it isn't like they're dipping into the, you know, payback. So, let me take a look at it.
And your comments?
I would be honored to represent the city of Montes, the residents of the city of Montesereno.
Great, and it's great that you volunteered to do this. Is there a motion?
Second? Motion?
Motion, second. That was very quick. All right, should we need to take a roll call, vote here?
No.
No. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nanimously approved. Thank you very much again.
And just as a comment, I can give council an update as we go through the general rate case as to what's going on.
Moving on to the next topic, which is actually the main topic of tonight, I think, the annual goal setting session for this all the year, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. City's fiscal year starts on July first and runs through June thirtieth of the next year. And every year we go through this, in the April, the March, April timeframe, where we have the goal setting session. We have used different formats. We elected to do it like this this year. And our city manager will take the meeting over from me for now to lead us through this goal setting session.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank everyone in attendance here this evening, including, we have several members of our senior staff, our city planner Diana Perkins, our finance and administrator officer, Ronald Samoranos, and our public works and city engineer Darrell Jordan, as well as our city attorney and our city clerk, who are at all of our meetings. Thank you all for being here this evening. And I would also say there are plenty of snacks and drinks on the table if the public wants to help us participate there as well. So as was stated by the mayor, every year we, we have our annual goal setting session prior to our annual budget. And the idea is to create a work plan for the coming year and work that into the budget. And this is for items that are, that the community brings towards, or towards the council or ideas that the council wants to see their vision implemented to make Montesereno a better and more desirable place to live. You know, essentially enhance your quality of life and improve. That's the idea within the confines of the work plan and the budget and staff time. So we decided this year to do, last year was April first, we're doing a couple of weeks early this, this year. And this does not necessarily include tasks, like for instance, we do a lot of work in Montesereno, we, we empty the trash, we work the counter, we pay the bills, we keep the lights on and all that. That's most of what the city staff does. This is more or less for kind of big ideas. And those big ideas are categorized into five goal categories. Quality, public services, community character, enhanced mobility, community safety, and environmental sustainability. We're looking for items that fit within those buckets, and those buckets are derived directly from our general plan. So we'll get into the staff of the slide presentation here. And I will turn around and we'll, we'll do it like this. We're going to identify the key accomplishments from our past year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, what staff has accomplished towards the strategic goals. Review briefly the city role, mission, vision, and value statement. This began in twenty seventeen, and every year is kind of a nice little review for the council. And it's been updated a couple of times, but we'll go through that briefly. And we'll, we're, we'll review the twenty-three, twenty-four strategic objectives and consider the new objectives for twenty-four and twenty-five. And the new objectives for twenty-four, twenty-five, I asked each city council member to provide a couple ideas prior to the meeting, and we compiled those in a list. So we will go through that. Let's go on to the next slide. So some of the key accomplishments from the twenty-three, twenty-four goals that were completed. We bought the first ever city vehicle for Montesereno, the pickup truck outside with the logos. You've probably seen it in the neighborhoods. We filled up several times a week with debris on the roadways and fallen branches and various. It's been really helpful to our community so far, feel good. City engineer, public works person was hired. We brought on Darrell Jordan last July. He's been a great addition to our team here in Montesereno. One of our goals last year was to bring a new city engineer onboard, we did so. We updated S B nine ordinance. City planner Diana Perkins took a very big role in doing that. It was a, the public was very interested in that as well, making some updates. So we're grateful we got through that. We improved the Billy Jones fence, cosmetically speaking, over on Winchester Boulevard. The wall had a lot of cracks in it, the sidewalk was lifted in front. We patched it up, painted it up at a very small price compared to, say, a two hundred thousand dollar plus rebuilding of the fence. Updated the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. We updated the Montesereno tree ordinance. We just did that, I believe, at our last meeting. And we did purchase what's called an N I C P for our cert members. That's outside on the side of our building. And that, we are working on filling that up with supplies as we speak. So some of the key accomplishments, not all of the key accomplishments, there were many more, but some. And through the mayor, councilmember Mecha check has his hand raised.
Mr. Leonardi, I noticed that it was not identified as a completed item, the changing of the Montesereno investment policy. And I believe we did that at the end of June last year. And we are now taking advantage of the higher T bill rates for the, almost a year now. And I think that's a key accomplishment that should be on the chart there. And it should be identified as completed in the list.
Thank you, councilmember Mecha check. It, it probably could have been as well, and that was a great accomplishment for the city. We had some other things, like we adopted the suicide prevention policy. We adopted a concealed carry weapons policy as well. But nevertheless, there were many more accomplishments. But that was, that's a good one to point out. And I think we have a few more on the next page here. We can go, keep our city pretty, litter removal program was launched by the Montesereno Youth Commission. There's a sign right there, you may see some of those up in the neighborhood. They look a lot bigger on the chair. We put them on the bold, a little harder to read, but it's an awareness program. Fire evacuation rounds on Winchester, Whittington, Highway nine vegetation and fuel removal. We coordinated with the Santa Clara County Fire Department. That was one of our strategic goals, and it's an ongoing goal. We'll discuss that a little further. But that was one of the major staff accomplishments. And the new design for our community center and a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Silicon Valley Clean Energy towards that new design. That is a huge accomplishment, and that is also still in process. Gas powered leaf blower ordinance was adopted. And substantial efforts towards our housing element update were also done. And we have a meeting with our assembly member this week. So we're hoping to get some more accomplished on that. So it was a good year for Montesereno, a lot of work was done, very busy staff, but there's always more to do. And we look forward to that in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Moving on to the role, mission, vision, and values, the overview. It talks about in twenty seventeen, when the council and our committee developed this, it was amended in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two at the annual goal setting sessions. In twenty twenty, we adopted a mission statement for the city for the very first time. And both documents are in this agenda packet tonight. I'm not going to go and read it for word for word, but if council had any comments or I, I hope you all had a chance to review it, it's good to take a look at it on an annual basis. Next slide. Again, the role of the council here describing that vision and value statement. I'm not going to read all of it, but we'll just, if anybody has any comments or questions, please stop me along the way. We'll go to the next slide. No questions or comments, we'll go to the next slide.
Go ahead.
I, when I look through the documents, it still refers to the mayor pro tempore. And it should be just a little cleanup, search and replace to vice versa.
Thank you. That was one of the improvements we did make this year. So we will change that. Okay, we'll get to the next slide. Continued, any other comments or corrections in the policy? Okay. We'll go to the next slide. This is the mission statement adopted in twenty twenty. It is kind of front and center on our main webpage, and this is why we are all here. To provide high quality services to residents, efficient, transparent, and fiscally responsible manner that preserves and enhances unique residential character of Montesereno, protects natural resources, minimizes resident impacts to the environment, and protects and enhances the health, safety, and mobility and welfare of residents. Next slide, please. This continues as part of the vision statement. Next slide, please. And here is the council values. This is how the council conducts itself, integrity and professionalism, transparency and openness. Any comments? Next slide, please. This talks about our accountability and our effective and efficient services. This talks about our fiscal responsibility, quality of life for all residents. These are what we strive to achieve. Thank you. We go through this every year, but essentially this model shows that eighty percent of the work is the routine daily operations of the city. Twenty percent of the work are the new ideas and the goals, the stuff that, how do we improve? How do we get those items into the daily operations that we want as part of the city's future? So it's like the eighty-twenty rule. Next slide, please. And this goes over our planning process, the mission, vision, and values, the strategic goals, the objectives, the performance indicators, and the staff work plans. That's how we operate through this process throughout the course of the year. Next slide, please. And this talks about how we manage it. Any comments or questions from council? Next slides, please. So we get to the part where we get to start talking about next year, which is the exciting part of the meeting. And once again, we covered this a little bit earlier, but our five main goal categories, quality public service, community character, enhanced mobility, community safety, and environmental sustainability, all directly derived from our general plan, and that is our framework. Next slide, please. So here are the goals that were submitted by the council and as well supported by the public, the correspondence that I've received over the last month. And top one of order is the installation of flock cameras citywide. And I will just go through each and every one of these topics briefly, and we'll let the council discuss at the end, and then we can take questions from, or comments from the public on these ideas. Probably the most efficient way to do it. We received quite a bit of correspondence from the public about flock cameras. For those who do not know what flock cameras are, these are cameras that read license plates for vehicles that come into your city. And if there is a problem with that vehicle, it will alert the police department, and the police will go to that area. And the police will go to that area where that vehicle was cited. And they will conduct their public safety measures in order to enhance our public safety regarding that, those vehicles. There has been flock cameras installed in the past by neighborhood watch teams, they're privately funded. The request that we've received from the public is to, for the council to consider funding publicly funded flock program. And the cost of this can range from anywhere from thirty to forty plus thousand dollars, depending on how many cameras are placed. And that would be an annual cost to the city, it would be a budget item. So that's what the correspondence was received and that is what the ask is this evening. And there are other things to consider long term, such as public records, requests that may emanate from the flock camera uses in the long run. Other operational items to consider. But we will get into those details probably as part of the discussion. Complete the community center with grant funding. We do have our bid package out.
Interrupt you for one second, do you want to go through each topic?
I I think that's probably
Discussion, or do you want to go through all the subjects and then have a discussion afterward?
Think we have seven of listed. So I was thinking maybe run through and then go to handle all as one. Complete the community center with grant funding. This is well underway, we have our bid package out. I think we're about two weeks into our bidding cycle. The bids are supposed to come back in early April, we're going to see what we get when we open up those bids. The idea is to bring the lowest competent bidder to council for a discussion and or approval at that time. To move forward with the community center. It's pretty straightforward. Highway nine safety improvements. Increase awareness of the fire wind danger related to poorly maintained vegetation. We have been, as we mentioned earlier, working on this with our county fire. And the good news is is they brought this, they they were working on a contract basis. They're what's called fuels removal team, but now they've brought that in house. But there probably can be more done. So one of the ideas was to work the next bullet point, work with Los Gatos and Saratoga to create a committee. And it could be a committee of, you know, mayors, vice mayors. But the idea would be work together, we can go to the next slide and team up with you know, Caltrans, you know, work with our state senators and assembly members to really make sure these evacuation routes are clear and will be safe in the event of a major disaster. I think events like Paradise, California and more recently Lahaina are on a lot of people's minds. We want to make sure that if any of those type of things were to occur in any of our jurisdictions, Saratoga, Los Gatos or Montessorino, our residents would be able to get out safely. And then look into the available grant funding, which may be available at the state level or perhaps even at the federal level in order to keep these programs going and remove dangerous fuels from the routes. Bullet number four or goal number four, fiber internet in Montessorino, can we sponsor, encourage and negotiate with providers to provide faster internet speeds to residents? And the answer is it is a privately handled endeavor by the business community, but we can certainly reach out. Should council look to achieve this goal or add this goal to the work plan. I noticed that in Los Gatos this very week, they were installing frontier fiber cables on the telephone poles. I think right now what we have is called Comcast and I'm not sure how the speeds are for residents. But if this is something the council sees merit in to get increased internet speeds, we can try to reach out to several entities and see what we can do from the cities from the staff's part of the work plan. Council member Mecha check us.
We're going to circle back to all these, but I just wanted to say right up front that I have fiber that came into my home just three weeks ago, so it's here. Brought here, brought here, but we'll talk about that later, I just wanted you to know that that's available.
It could be very well be on its way to everybody soon. Number five, recruit more cert members, email and social media campaign, I'm assuming that would be staff sponsored. Explain cert role and benefits, taking cert classes goals to add ten members in twenty-four and twenty-five. And I think that's a good number to work off of if we could participate somehow and recruit, really publicize, we do have the new N I C P right here. That would be a great goal to try to get ten people to support that new N I C P outside. Pretty straightforward, next slide, please. Number six, finalize evaluation of the Los Gatos Monastirino Police Contract and Options. The contract is coming due in June of twenty twenty-five. And I think that we would like to definitely work with the Los Gatos Montessorino Police Department and cover any changes that might be different from when the contract was last updated or amended back in twenty fifteen. Number seven, update, upgrade the city of Montessorino financial system to better facilitate internal financial controls. And staff, this is a goal that's carried over from last year, staff is already working on this. But we have an ad hoc committee that will be bringing an item too soon. But nevertheless, glad to discuss it further if there are any other ideas. So that's the summary of what was proposed and it's a good list of work, it's plenty of work. If we can get through all that work in this year, we'd be accomplishing a lot. So that would be what we would just aspire to do.
Right, thank you.
So here's what will happen next, we'll summarize and affirm the key points, agreements and decisions, identify next steps in the process. And I guess this means a discussion among the council. And then the public, I guess, could speak on behalf of anything, and there's a number of them here tonight. Anything that they would see merit in or would like to see. And then for the discussion by the council and we'll, we'll drop them into all the buckets and present the final goals document as part of our budgeting process going forward in the next month or two.
Do you have budget numbers against any of those items, any of the seven? Because some of them seem to be policy oriented, that don't, wouldn't have quote hard dollars associated with it, but it would have staff time.
Thank you for the question, yes, that is correct, most of what we see there is just policy versus cost. With the exception of say the block cameras, which would be a definite line item, dollar amount of probably forty thousand dollars, depending on how many cameras are deployed and or the plan or the proposal that's put forth by the vendor. So I, I
What's our numbers on that one?
I have a question also. So there are seven items on that list, are those all the items that were submitted?
That is the totality of the items which I received from the council.
Okay, I'd like to make a comment on that. Five of those were mine. If nobody else had any ideas, any, any strategic goals for next year?
I was going to add that this one, which is to provide the last mile service to our seniors. Maybe provide some kind of shuttle service, I know they do that in Montessorino, I believe in some of the cities. So the seniors need a ride to get through the train, the state park, the medical facility. Meanwhile, we're looking to providing a last mile service for them.
It's called a last mile service, shuttle service for seniors?
Maybe the first mile, they're trying to get to the station, okay, that's on the spot.
I believe that. I, I believe that that service is offered through B T A and before I go too far, I just see what's available.
Yeah, check it for that.
B T A.
I'll check and see if the ride program is still
And then I've got a point after you finish making your points.
I want to go back to the thing that you had said that you were accomplished. And so actually I pointed out the investment thing, where we're actually getting four, five percent of it done, like maybe fifty grand, so that's a pretty important one. And I would encourage you when you go to the city manager's meeting, because I've had other council members talk to me. Most cities have just kind of put their money in the block to come and get no interest on it, because they think that's all they can invest with, they want to keep it really secure. They need to know how it's done, so maybe you can enlighten those people as to say, this is what your city needs to do, this is how it's done. I know the city of Saratoga talked to me about it, so I would encourage you. Put that out, because it saves a lot of money to the taxpayer.
I'm happy to share that information, I know that the mayor had brought that up. There was another agency that was interested in, in knowing what we were doing. And we are, we always call other jurisdictions and ask questions and, and find out what they're doing, especially about, you know, their accounting practices and stuff. So we are open to a free exchange of information should they approach us. Happy to share.
Our job as Montessorinos to punch above our weight. That's like, that's why you get recommended, keep punching above your weight, do more than they expect us at a small city to do. For our residents, of course. The community policy.
I've had a number of residents express concerned over, concern over the past year about our speed limits in some of our parking. When I say parking, I'm specifically referring to highway nine. And I believe that we've got some challenges on the enforcement side. And I think that if we, if we're allocating per dollars, I think that it would be good to allocate some money if we have to do any type of studies or hire third parties to validate whatever is required. I don't want to get into the details of that, but I think that that is worthy of a strategic goal.
We can certainly add that to the list, I'm sure that's on everybody's mind, safety and parking.
Well, it's, it's parking on highway.
Highway nine, which is a safe council members, any other additions, suggestions before we cycle back to the beginning? Nope, I think the city manager.
I can get yours again. The one thing I would add is keeping track of legislative issues that are coming down the line. Especially as the effect permit fees and everything else, there's a whole bunch of bills and I'll go to it when my, when we go to the common period. I've asked the city clerk to attach that to the agenda, all the bills are pending right now. But permit fees and costs and things of that sort, as to where we stand, I know there was also an accomplishment, we reviewed those fees last year. That probably should be an ongoing process, especially if you're going to be spending more money. And try to care if we're appropriate.
So what we did in twenty-two, twenty-three goals was we indexed that for inflation, we brought the goals to the right kind of levels. And then we indexed this, so every year at the budget, Ms. Perkins and Mr. Jordan, they'll bring forward the latest numbers, the latest adjustments on those. So now it's kind of automatic, we're not going to fall twenty years behind. And it's, it's hard to cover every accomplishment again, that the city has achieved within the year. I mean, things like we've remodeled the kitchen here, there's just a lot of things that have happened. But good catches, you know, with the finance, yeah, that was a big one, so thank you for that.
All right, shall we cycle back to the beginning?
Yes, so if we want to go back to the top of the seven on strategic goals and I would probably recommend at this point, because there's been discussion among the council here with the public has to say maybe, and then council could get into discussion and say, we want these seven plus, you know, the, the other items that were just brought up to be pursued. We do have the document with the strike throughs that we can pull up on the screen. And I can show you the carryovers, because there are some carryovers from last year's goals that are ongoing. So it probably warrants discussion before the public has a chance to weigh in on the other items. We can blow it up a little bit, that would be helpful. But kind of lined through, most of the ones that I have are completed here. But number four, plan the greenwater infrastructure project, we allocated, I think, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to do our parking lot outside. That's still in the works. Review and amend city of Montessorino financial policies, again, this was something that was brought forward by the mayor. But we are continuing to look into the biannual budget and the things like the investment policy. We will be bringing some recommendations forward in the near future to the finance committee to, to review, and then that will come to the council. Improve governance and operations, review the value, select a new financial reporting system, that also will be coming to the finance committee. Build Montessorino's Community Center, a carryover which is in the new goal, the new proposals. Review and improve the city of Montessorino's website with easier access to historical minutes and recordings, and I think our city clerk has been actively working on that, but it's ongoing. I think we're at, what, nineteen eighty-eight when it comes to getting those ordinances? We might have about thirty some odd years to go. Update the general plan. This will come when our housing element is completed. And this ties into also number C here. Return this to offering affordable housing, we came up with the A D U idea. And we're going to be meeting with our assembly member this week, Thursday at three P M, and I hope the mayor can be there. And we will see if we can work with them to help us achieve this. Going to community safety, assess evacuation routes, a large ongoing goal. And that was part of the new goals to be carried over, update the wireless ordinance. This requires a lot of effort on behalf of staff. And it's been on our goals for several years, we'll continue to have it on our goals. But we got to get the housing element done first, and this is very time consuming and it's like a high amount of time, but a small amount of, I'm not going to say small amount of reward, but something that is not a huge priority, I think, for the council based on what I hear year after year. But we will get there soon. Promote low water, fire landscaping alternatives and encourage water conservation. Those are both items that will also be part of the general plan update process, but we don't want to scratch them off per se. So everything highlighted in yellow will be carryover along with what council selects this evening. Assuming there's no objections from the council carrying any of those items forward.
Yeah, if you, if you just go back to the finance one, I think that, that you could stroke off six A. Review and amend, if required, the city of Montessorino's investment policy, we did that.
And that was what we were discussing earlier, partially.
Yeah.
But if it's not an ongoing thing, if, if we feel that the work is complete in that category, then we can take that off.
I, I think it's very much complete.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I like take, take an accomplishment.
We will scratch off six A.
Well, but do you want to not review our investment policy every year? Like, let's say that we decide that we don't want to do T bills anymore. And maybe we do want to do something like invest in an S and P index fund, like if we would have done ten years ago, we'd have thirty million dollars in our account.
If we're, we're forbidden from doing that.
I know, but there's other vehicles out there, we just never really looked at all of them. We just took T bills because it was a pretty, pretty easy process to get in and get out of.
The vice mayor makes a good point in the sense that if the Federal Reserve, you know, they were in a pattern of raising rates and that really helped us get these returns now in the lathering with the T bills and all that. But if they start cutting rates, then there could be, it's, it's always an evolutionary if they start cutting rates, then there could be, it's, it's always an evolutionary process.
Yeah. And I, and I mean, you can invest in other instruments. You just can't invest a lot of money. And when I made that, when I made that calculation, that was only investing twenty percent of what our reserves were back in two thousand and fourteen. I wasn't even investing a whole lot of our reserves. Yes.
So you could, if there's an interest in reviewing it annually, it doesn't necessarily need to be a goal.
I don't think it needs to be a goal, but I think it should be something that does come up every year though.
Could be something for the finance committee also. If we review that regularly. All right.
All right. So just like to say that we should keep an eye on our money and not keep it in a mattress fund.
Like we did.
Yes.
So if there are no comments on any of those highlighted, further comments on any of the yellow, then
Just to clarify on this, improve governance and operations. I, I see the role of the finance committee. We have a finance subcommittee. Review basically financial statements that come out of Monte's statements as they come out, awards that have come out on a ongoing basis. So maybe you find the clearly the goal, the fair winner and release the finance committee to operate. Including looking at investments and looking at our digital finances. Make sure they're properly reflected in our audits and probably figure out where we, but that's so I, I thought I saw that somewhere where you were.
So we did just, or we recreated the finance subcommittee. As an ad hoc committee, it is for a limited duration and a limited purpose. So this year it's specific to working with the city manager and the finance director on the new budgeting system and a few other big priorities. Not necessarily like something that would be happening year after year, because that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a ten order.
Yeah. So but somehow we need to identify that, that, that there is a role that somebody's got to play to take care of all that.
So that would be staff.
Yeah, within, but within the staff role. We'd like to get that clarified.
So I have a question if you don't want. I noticed here that you canceled out the NICP. But earlier you said the NICP isn't finished. So why would you cancel out something that's not finished?
Well, for the most part, and it's a good question. Thank you, Councilman Turner. For the most part, the shed is there and it just needs to be stocked with the equipment. And then we, you know, also
You can't use it for the shed. It's just a shed. I mean, there are no tools in there. There's no helmet. There's
Well, no, he's saying that we now need to stop.
I understand, but, but, but I've been waiting for this for two years.
Right. So now, now we purchased it.
Let, let me finish, please. My, where is my hand? So if you're going to cancel it, that means it's done. And if it's, if, if it's not done, we shouldn't cancel it. That's what this is for.
I understand your point of view on this. The equipment is not in the shed, but the equipment will be in the shed. It's to the point where it is virtually not something that's front and center on our plate anymore, so to speak. When will the equipment be in there? As soon as the cert volunteers go get it, we have it in our budget. We've had it in our budget for the last couple of years. And that, it's just the amount to get that in the shed at this point is so minor. We can leave it on the list if you, if the council sees merit to it, but it's, it's for all intent and purposes will be done.
Okay. So, so here's, here's
The big accomplishment was getting the shed.
I have with that. For the last two years, I've been asking for that NICP. Last week we got the shed. There's nothing inside the shed. That's not, that's not an NICP. That's a shed. So we need to be able, you need to be able to say, who is going to pick, get all the equipment? And we need to be able to do a formal handoff to the cert team. Because even if you buy the equipment and the equipment is not what we need, it's not complete. So we need to complete that. And that's why I asked Jackie Rose to be the point of contact. Because she has the experience to do that. She's done it for, for, for all the other NICPs. Now, I know that from your perspective, you, you're saying you want to do it, and it's fine. But we have to know, I have to know. I have the responsibility as the committee representative for the cert group, when we're going to have this, because I've waited for two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's probably safe to say that that item will be finished this fiscal year. We have, we have the full list. We, we spoke a couple of weeks ago about who will actually order the equipment. And I think it's, it's well underway.
Okay. So, so I think that's one thing.
It's not finished. It's, it's
It's not finished. And I don't feel comfortable with deleting it from that list when it's not finished. That's all I'm saying.
Well, let's remove the line there.
We can, we can carry that one forward.
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So any other comments or questions from the council? All right. Seeing no others.
I was going to say thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
You saved us some money this time.
The, the public comments by subject, by item or?
I would say just invite them up for their three minutes on anything they want to talk about regarding our strategic goals.
Good. All right. In that case, public comment, is there anybody here in chambers who wants to comment on any of the items that were discussed? And please step forward and you will get three minutes. Hold on a second. We need to start the timer.
Do you have a lot to?
And he also has some stuff he wants us to share.
They want to do this by the books. Everybody gets three minutes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, point of order. So I know that a lot of people are here to discuss flock cameras tonight. But I think the real goal is that we are going to put this as a strategic goal. Not how we are going to implement flock cameras tonight, because I know like, like Mr. Jeans did a great job outlining where cameras should go into city and stuff like that. But I think that kind of information really needs to be in a, in the agenda item that will be held about implementing plot cameras inside of the city. Or else I think we could probably spend a lot of time doing just this one issue. So I, I, I hope we can kind of keep it towards, we think that this is a great strategic goal. And let's talk about the implementation, privacy issues that are going to come up in it, so on and so forth at a future meeting.
Agreed. Agreed. That's a good point.
I'll just make a comment for the people in the room. I've watched the installation of the flock cameras and seen the benefit. And it's, it's all about how whatever we do in Monte Sereno, it's going beyond what's there now. How that's going to work. And I'm going to be in full support of this as a strategic item and, and putting a line item in our budget. I just wanted everyone to know that.
Okay. So I don't know if that helps or changes.
If there are three of you here who want to put it as a line item in budget, I'll just go and say that.
We're glad you're here. We're glad residents are here.
No, well, and I think you should present a little bit about what your letter stated, because it was very thorough and I thought it was very informative.
So do you want to tell me which slide you want? I can only share one thing at a time.
This will do.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. So that's a flock camera. I don't know who's seen them. I wasn't really familiar with them. We were starting to have a few problems in our neighborhood. Burglaries amongst other things. And a, a group of us got together in the neighborhood in which I am, which is the Withy Road area. And we discussed the possibility of flock cameras. We then went in and talked to the police department and we were really surprised as to the use that the police department is able to make of them in helping apprehend suspects, in making our community safer. So if you can go to the next one, but there's a flock camera. That's not the next one. No, the, the map. That was, okay. So if you can enlarge that a little. This was a map that we got from the police department. And down at the bottom, it's just disappeared, but there are a couple of red dots on Highway nine showing where a couple of locations that Los Gatos installed them. A through F are flock cameras that have been installed privately in Monte Sereno. And one through eleven are locations, if you drop it down a little lower. One through eleven are locations in the City of Monte Sereno that the city suggested would be good locations for the city to invest in putting flock cameras. They are, they would catch any license plate entering the City of Monte Sereno. Or ninety-five percent of the City of Monte Sereno, you add a couple more and you might get everyone, but you know, it's a case of you have a certain budget. It's three thousand dollars a camera. I'm showing eleven cameras, so that would be thirty-three thousand a year. I think that is peanuts when you're investing in the safety of the residents of the city and the burglaries and the crime that's going on. And we'd like your help in trying to reduce that. And we think that this is probably one of the best ways in which it can be done. When you get around to putting it on the, an agenda item to discuss it in more detail and have the pros and the cons discussed by the privacy people and against the safety people. Then I think you can discuss it in more detail and get the police department involved. Maybe bring out Officer Bill Hoyt or one of the other police officers.
Sorry to interrupt your train of thought.
That's it? Okay. So that's what I wanted to say. Do I have three votes? Thank you.
Mr. Jeans, just one, one quick question. When I was looking at your map, I noticed that there was no camera at Bicknell and Kido. Did the officer mention why? Or was that just?
I didn't see that. I think that would catch, oh, no, there is one. Can you?
Here, I'm just, I'm, I'm just looking at it online. And it was, there, there was no label at, at that corner.
Bicknell is C, is it? Oh, no.
Well, that's
Okay. So it's right on the edge of Monte Sereno. If you put one on Bicknell, you'll get the people on the right-hand side and Elmpa. So yes, maybe it's twelve.
Okay. I was just curious if you had mentioned why he didn't.
No, and it could be my error because I took his map and quickly
Oh, okay.
Did a couple of changes.
That's quick.
Because he missed the one on Dave's Avenue. So I caught that one, but I might have made a mistake and then dropped another one. But it's that order of magnitude. So I was trying to give you a budget agenda that you can say, okay, well, can we afford thirty-six thousand, thirty-three thousand a year for safety as the safety item, item four on your five items on Steve Leonardi's list?
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else in chambers here who, please?
Hi, my name's Steve Cole. I live on Greenwood Road. We have a flock camera right at Highway nine in Greenwood Road. We passed a petition around to the neighbors who all agreed, or most of them agreed to fund it, right, on an annual basis, which we've done. So my question is, if these flock cameras are for neighborhood use, shouldn't the cost of those flock cameras be absorbed by the neighbors in that community that are getting the use of it unless they're, you're using a flock camera in an area that is not a, a neighborhood, you know, what, what is the purpose of that, you know, and how's that working?
Can I ask a follow-up question at this point?
Sir, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a quick follow-up question? If the city were to take up, take over the cost of your camera, would you be interested in that?
Well, I, I don't object to paying the cost of the camera. The question is, if the city were to do that, how, how is that shared among everybody? Is everybody going to have an increase in their appropriate taxes to cover that? Or how's that, how's that going to work, you know?
That's, that's what we'll be discussing, I think, a little bit later on. I'm just curious if, if you thought that if the city did move forward with this, would you want the city to take over your flock camera system? Because right now, so I've, I've attended some presentations on flock. And from what I understand, each organization that has purchased a camera has jurisdiction over that camera. And then you can share that with whoever you want. And I'm sure you've shared it with the Los Gatos Monte Sereno Police Department.
Yes, we have.
But it's not shared by the City of Monte Sereno.
Right.
Whereas if we were to implement a plan like this, we, we would probably talk about making it implemented by the City of Monte Sereno where they would have management capabilities. And they will have then assigned their cameras to the Los Gatos Monte Sereno Police Department.
Yeah. My question is, does the camera is used only for neighborhood use or are they used, you know, in other thoroughfares, you know, where maybe you're really not getting the utilization
Right.
as a neighborhood camera watch item. So I don't have all the answers to that. I just want to make sure that whatever we do is equitable, you know, for the people who are getting the benefit.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much. Oh, wait a second. I think you have more questions.
Since you already have it, do you know what the cost of this being for running?
I think it was three thousand dollars
A year?
That I passed it on to Withy. And I gave all of that to him, but
And it benefited Greenwood Road and Greenwood Lane.
Out of all of Greenwood Road and Greenwood Lane, I think about eighteen people participated in the cost.
You paid like a hundred, fifty dollars each, something like that.
I think it was more.
We paid a couple hundred.
Okay.
The current cost of the cameras are thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
There may also be companies you look at for subsidization here and giving you a better
And we're happy to have it, but it would be nice if Monte Sereno would pay for it instead of us.
All right. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. Hi, my name's Anna Harbison. I'm a resident of Monte Sereno for the last two years and prior to that, Los Gatos for three years. I'm just here lending support for the flock cameras. It seems like I'm speaking to the, to the choir here a little bit. But yeah, I'm a physician, other three little girls, eight and under. And we've just, my husband and I have been a little bit increased concern over the last year or so about safety in our neighborhood. We live on Vineland. We had some kind of a suspicious individual taking pictures of our house as well as our neighbors. We had someone, a neighbor whose house got broken into while their teenage son was at home. And then someone on cabin just got broken into last week. So it's, you know, just something that I think, it seems like when I spoke to the detective in the police department, that the flock camera was sort of what they, what he adores as sort of the kind of best technology right now to be able to identify individuals that might be suspicious. And so I just wanted to, yeah, lend support for that. And it seems like, you know, relatively small city, so not too many cameras would be needed to really identify most of the neighborhood in terms of cars coming in and out. So I think this would be a great strategic goal for the, for the city for this year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Want to make a?
Sure.
Yeah. Just, just so you know, in twenty-twenty-two, I worked with the Twin Creeks Villa Caballero Neighborhood Watching Group. And there are ninety homes in there. It's Twin Creeks Villa Caballero, Villa in Catana, Alba Joe, Cadbury and Banyan. And they purchased, we worked with Jackie Rose, who worked with, who was from the Los Gatos Monte Sereno Police Department. We, they purchased the cameras that were going to go on the streets. The difference between Los Gatos and Monte Sereno is that The difference between Los Gatos and Monteserino is that the flock cameras are mostly on public streets. Now, for Monteserino, sometimes it's beneficial to have a flock camera, but there's no sidewalk. So we had to ask the resident to see if they were willing to install the flock cameras, and some of them were. And so they got into an agreement with the police department to actually give the data that they, they found on the flock cameras to the police department when they needed to.
They can all be installed on public, right away?
No, that's right.
They can be.
Yes, yes, they can be. But in Monteserino, it was very difficult in some places to, to have the flock cameras out in, in public street because we didn't have, we didn't, they didn't, we didn't have access. And so some, so the police department put it in some of the yards and some of the neighbors volunteered to have them.
That's a good point. Before we get to the actual.
Yeah, so when you go through the actual implementation, you'll find out that chances are we may need more flock cameras than the ones that the, the police department sets themselves.
All right. Thank you. Please go ahead.
My name is Thomas Parkman, also part of the Wiffy Road group. Support our flock cameras. I would love to see them across Monteserino in total. You come in, you come out, you know, why not make it harder for people to do that? Seems pretty logical to me since we've got the technology. Again, thirty thousand seems a pretty, pretty small number. And I think that definitely, you know, the neighborhood thing to concentrate them there versus, you know, anywhere you come into our city for them to be seen, I think would be a benefit. On the same theme, with all of the trouble we did have up on Wiffy Road, or are still having up on Wiffy Road, I'd like to have police response time be considered as a strategic goal. We love our police department. We're of course strong supporters. But, you know, three minutes is better than four minutes and four minutes is better than five minutes. So if we could work on how to get those response times down, it'd be great. For through some of the worst parties we had, we were looking at an hour, an hour and a half in order to get a, a police response. There was no, no threat for life, at least back from the party for going on. But it should have been nice to have an extra officer patrol there. And again, if we've got the money to do that, I think it'd be great. In those meetings as well, to look at again, the, the no parking violations and the noise isolations. None of those existed in the city charter at the time. I don't hope those parties in our neighborhoods, I know none of us on Wiffy do. If you council could consider, you know, quality of life perhaps as one of the goals. Terrific.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Just go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Edward Chan, resident of Monteserino City, part of the Wiffy group as well. I saw a demo on the flock camera in the police department about two weeks ago. It's fantastic. It can detect the license plates of the vehicle that is suspicious. And the detective showed us the real demo and he was able to look up live, okay, what is the other information in other system? So I think this is a valuable investment we should do. And as far as the concern about whether the camera is on a particular street or neighborhood, actually the cars can pass through your neighborhood and go to, go out, go, go outside Monteserino or in the other, the other way around is that the incoming, they can come in in a certain neighborhood, although the camera is on a particular street, it can actually detect the vehicle and then the vehicle can later come to your neighborhood that is far away from the first camera. So I think it's a very good investment. And the other point is that over the weekend, I heard that there is a damage on a gas pipe in near Wiffy Road. I do not know the details. And if we had that camera installed, we could have detected if there was any suspicious vehicle coming into that neighborhood around that time frame. So I think I fully support this idea of the block camera. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. There, anybody else?
Can I just ask a question as long as he brought that up?
Could you please step forward?
Sorry.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Cheryl Cole. I live on Greenwood Road. Been there for forty-two years. The issue with the house, what is it, one eight six three oh, Wiffy Road? We've experienced situations ourselves, blocking our dogs with the rottweilers and everything, but this new gas leak with PG&E when we walked by, there were seven PG&E trucks, two polit, two fire trucks, two police cars, an emergency vehicle, all kinds of things going on, and we've heard all kinds of rumors. So we'd love to know what Monteserino knows, if you can share with us and, and what is in fact going on. We've heard that people have been, I don't know if the word is evicted or that they said nobody can be there because they've turned off all the power right now. But we don't know if that's temporary. We don't know any of the situation. And we're across the ravine and if there were to be a fire there, it would, I mean, it would be a disaster for all of us. So.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susanna Craig. I'm a resident of Violin Avenue for over twenty years. Thank you so much for supporting this effort for the flock cameras. We believe that it's really important as of late, you know, we've been living here over twenty years. We've heard of so many break-ins into our neighborhoods, including our neighbors right across the street while their child was still in the home. We've also heard of a lot of packages being stolen and packages delivered to signal if that resident is home or not in order to figure out if they should break in. So thank you for that support. I hope that you guys take a look at it and that we can implant as many cameras as possible. But I would also ask the council, if we could please remind our residents about the services that we provide. When if we go on vacation, that we have a check on your property. I don't know if that, is that still available? I can't even remember. Yeah. So I don't know if our new residents know this or not, but it is worthwhile to re, re, re-educate all of our neighbors that that is that service, that if you do go away, that someone can go buy a check. So thank you.
Okay, good suggestions. Thank you. Is there anybody else here in chambers who wants to discuss a topic, not necessarily limited to block cameras? Any other, any of the topics that were brought up earlier? No, is there anybody online? Sorry. You have some final questions?
Yeah, this'll take a minute. I was listening to the discussion about finance and utilization of investments and maximizing the, the cash that's available in the coffers. And I just want to reiterate this, that it's the responsibility of the council to ensure the preservation of that money more so than getting your maximum return. Because that's where you can really get yourself in trouble because you think you're buying a long-term bond because it's a high interest rate and then all of a sudden the interest rates go down, you make money there, but if it goes the other way, it gets a lot worse. And so I think you have to be very prudent about how this money is invested and it's more important to invest it to ensure that the principal is kept intact than it is to maximize whatever appreciation you think can get on the investment.
Thank you. Is there anybody online who wants to comment?
There was a previous hand raised. At this point, there is no hands. I've taken it down, so I'm not sure.
Okay, well, let me ask again if there's anybody online attending through Zoom. If you want to comment, please raise your virtual hand. In that case, I think we're done with public comment. Let's bring it back to the council then go through the, all the subjects again.
And Goizi, if we could put the list of, of the seven items that were brought forth by council?
First item on the list was the flock cameras, so maybe we can start with that.
So I would just ask the council for essentially a show of hands. Who wants to see that added to the strategic goal or the public safety category? We'll have one, two, three, four, five. That would be an add.
So that's definitely on the list for next year.
Let's move on to item number two, complete the community center with grant funding. Who would like to see that? Continue, add to the list, four of five. Okay, so that will carry forward.
Look, can I just clarify one thing on that one? It says with grant funding, what if we don't get enough grants to cover the entire cost?
Well, it's just the idea of continuing till we get to that discussion point, I guess you would say. We'll come to council ultimately when the bids are repulsed.
Okay, because I, I've always been under the understanding that we're going to have plenty of some money for this.
Yes, as a matter of fact, it was already allocated in the budget that six hundred thousand was going towards the community center. As well as we had two hundred thousand almost in grant funds plus another five hundred thousand. So.
Yeah, my support for sure.
Okay. Number three, Highway nine, safety improvements. And you know, we have A, B, C and D here. Should kind of all work together. And quite honestly, this might be something that the council may want to form an ad hoc committee.
I'd like to see it all.
It could be encompassed as part of the, of public safety ad hoc committee, the fire, the wildfire preparedness and the emergency preparedness committee. And be incorporated into that committee that's already.
Yeah. I may, I brought this up at West Valley Mayor's meeting also, and I had a sort of offline discussion with mayors of Los Gatos and Saratoga. I think we have a much better chance of getting anything done with Caltrans, if three cities work together than just Monteserino. Actually, most of the problems that I see on Highway nine are in Saratoga, in the Saratoga area. So it'll be hard for Monteserino to get anything done in general with Caltrans, but it was, I think the three cities, and I volunteer to set up that committee between the three cities.
So a show of hands on, on that strategic goal with those bullet points, okay, five? All right. Number four, the fiber internet in Monteserino. Should this be a strategic goal or we should see where private enterprise takes us or we see us bring forward a staff report?
Just, just to follow up what Council member Beckenstock was talking about, I, I've had fiber now for the last two years at my house through Frontier. I gave up Comcast because it really is horrific. If anything, would like to try to kick Comcast to the button, say, why can't you get a better, a better cable plan here? I understand we have one of the oldest ones in the region. But, but no, fiber is here and I pay right now sixty bucks for just about a gigabit worth of service. Of course, that's supposed to be a one-year deal. I'm sure I'll lose that soon, but, but overall, we have a pretty good fiber system that's going up throughout Monteserino. And I think we're, did they say how much they cover? From what I saw, they were passing seventy percent. Oh, yeah, it's, it's phenomenal. Yeah. I.
I don't know if they mentioned that when they installed yours.
But they've been pretty quiet about it. And you know what? You get flyers in the mail, but you know, it's not like this is available on your street. You know, and, and they will trench to your, to your house, to the demarc line. But I had conduit installed when I redid my house. Yeah. And it was like less than an hour.
Yeah.
For, for to have fiber to the home. And I thought that was, you know, going to be years away.
Yeah, I think it took a couple hours, but they, they actually ran it right over the Comcast cable. They just, they just cable tied it to Comcast.
I, I don't think that it should be city councils initiative number four. I think that, that now private enterprise does that. And I, you know, as I, I think about the line items, item one and item two and three are worthy and what four is, is a different.
Well, on number four, I'm, I'm the one who put this up. I think there's a big difference in different areas of Monteserino. If you look at the R one twenty areas where the houses are really close together, those have access to fiber right now.
R one eight.
R, R one eight, sorry. And the, the larger lots that are farther apart in general don't have access to fiber right now.
It, it would be interesting to at least know what their plan is.
Yeah.
I haven't called them. And they won't give you an answer.
Yeah.
Because I don't have fiber.
Same for me.
Lots are bigger.
But yeah, I'm, I'm stuck with Comcast and something very interesting happened. The FTC changed the definition of broadband earlier this week. Broadband is now defined as upload twenty megabits per second. And magically Comcast the next day changed their upload speeds from ten to twenty.
Yeah. I, I was gonna ask if anybody else got an email that they have Comcast service. They, they've now increased at no cost to us.
Yeah. Just because FTC changed the definition of broadband.
Yeah.
Oh, anyway.
I think that if you don't have, if you want an alternative to Comcast, there's Starlink. You know, and the cost of Starlink is, is reduced dramatically and the, and the value is there. And it's, it's, you know, it's not terrestrial, so it's, you could have a huge disaster and you'll still have your Starlink.
Yeah. I would also say that Verizon five G is also very viable. In fact, I would suggest that for the NCIP, that there be at least a hotspot there. I guess if we have this on the agenda, something for the city to look at. I, I think all we need is to find out what's going on.
Yeah.
Because I don't think Monteserino is going to be digging the street to put fiber in there. There's not a city item to.
So.
Except to be able to judge it. So I don't know. Staff could look into that and get Comcast or whoever is providing the services. Tell us what is happening during with the rest of the city and whether city of Monteserino can help us somewhere or not.
Well, to, to riff on that point, it would be good to see that maybe a meeting, have someone from Comcast volunteer at Verizon saying, or Starlink, here's what, here's what the alternatives are for Monteserino residents. And move on.
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah.
They're not even in a com.
We're not making this a strategic goal. Is this something that staff can look at?
We can just make it an agenda item.
Sure. Yeah. All right. Okay.
I think we all agree on not making this a strategic goal.
Okay. Number five, recruit more CERT members. And this would be, I guess, the city of Monteserino sponsored social media campaign. I will tell you that we are highlighting this in the next newsletter going to everyone's house. And I will say, the mere presence of the, the new NICP sitting out there should get some folks excited about joining CERT. The idea to, to add ten members, that sounds like the right amount to support the NICP, so. How many do we have right now? I think we have like three, five, including Avery.
Yeah.
And you?
Can you, Avery?
We're, we're half the.
You're half the CERT. I'm trying to see.
And I've been on it for seven years.
I was gonna say, there's, there's three of us. Who's there? Javon?
Rowena? You? And your husband, right, Rowena?
Say that again?
Your husband is on actually?
Yeah.
So that's four.
And the gentleman.
Edgardo?
Eduardo.
Eduardo Laber.
So we got five.
And Patrick Dirks.
Okay. And I'm on, I'm there. So the wife is there also. So we're already at six. We need four more. And that's going to be all, the rest of the four of you, right?
So let me, let me make a recommendation here. We're looking at CERT and, and, and the problem with CERT is the number of hours that they, and the commitment that they have to just take in the class. Now, one of the things we, we can do is, is to have a neighborhood watch group. That's what we have along Twin Creeks, Villa Caballero, and it only took us, you know, a month to put that up. And then we got ninety homes, right? If we can get every house, every street in Monteserino to be part of the neighborhood watch group, then that would help the CERT members. Right? Because it's, 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 CERT is up here, you know, the neighborhood would watch group can help the CERT people say, okay, yes, so-and-so is in my street and they came out with their house. Right now, we. Say, okay, yes, so and so is in my street and they came out of their house. Right now, we, we only have CERT and, and. Last year it was just my husband and I just doing all of Monteserino for two days, right? So if we could have the neighborhood watch group also to be, to be part of, of the team, then that would help. Now.
You want that?
Watch, hang on, hang on please.
I was just gonna say, make it part of number five.
Can I finish? The neighborhood watch group in, in, um. Blanchard was headed by Filippa Alves, right? So she passed. So we need somebody else to do that. But if we can get, we can get that group to, the groups together, then that would also be. Something you could do in your spare time.
Yeah, so, yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to get to the bigger picture because you're getting into the, you know, deep dive right now. So what needs to be done? What I would suggest is, and number five, you said recruit more CERT members, maybe add in there recruit more CERT and next door neighborhood members. And neighborhood watch members. And make, make that a part of.
Yeah, I was just explaining what the neighborhood watch group is, cause you can't put it in and you don't know what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. But the goal, I think the goal should be as stated here, not, not to have ten members, but to add ten members.
Yeah, so you add ten members, but also the goal you'd be to, uh. Uh, encourage more participation in the neighborhood watch groups. I would add that right away.
We can add that.
What do you think when someone returning? Put that up? Just adding that into item one.
Yeah, 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 that's good.
Yeah, the class, uh, I attended the class last September and four people signed up for the class. I was the only one who showed up.
Yeah, that's what happened.
The other three did not show up, so I think people have the wrong impression about how much time it takes. Uh, it's three weeks, the class that I took was three weeks, two days a week. Well, it's not, not a whole. It's not a gigantic.
It's gotten easier over the years, cause you can do it even zoom sometimes.
So anybody here wants to sign up for this class?
Yeah, it's really well worth it for your own safety.
I think the lady in black over there will sign up.
For your agenda.
I vote for number five. Show hands for number five.
Five.
And that's with the amended language.
With the amended language encouraged neighborhood watch.
Yeah.
I, I don't even know how you get on the neighborhood watch, so maybe. Usually a group of residents such as, was discussed earlier Greenwood Lane and.
You, you can edit them all probably.
You can take Filippa Alves's place.
Number six, finalize evaluation of the Los Gatos Monstera Police contract options. Show hands on that.
We, we actually have a committee, subcommittee.
Yeah, yes. So it's a carryover.
Yeah.
Let's see, update and upgrade the Monteserino financial system to better facilitate internal financial controls, and that's also a carryover. And assuming that everybody wants to add that as well. So essentially on here, we'll add everything, we'll add the amended language for number five. And we'll take number four, we'll turn that into a, just a meeting agenda item. And then we'll carry over everything from the previous list. This is kind of the message I received. We will bring the. We'll take away the strike through on the NICP and until we get the equipment in there. Um. You know, a couple items brought forward come to public. One is no parking, one is a noise ordinance. Those are quality of life issues. Um, we could look into those as future agenda items. We could add those as goals. Um, essentially with no parking, we have no parking signs, but we would probably have to work with the PD. As part of the contract amendment to enforce no parking in Monteserino and be able to collect a fine on it. So that's a hole in our legislation. Um, a noise ordinance, that just comes down to quality of life. That includes all kinds of noises. If your neighbor has a leaf blower at five AM on a holiday morning. That might be something that affects you. Um, so we would have to include that as well as parties. Decibel levels for, for whatever noise there may be, uh, people working on cars in their garage. Uh, people partying too late. Uh, we don't really have any descriptions of those types of things in our city. Code or ordinances. So. Good points brought forward. Um. But it's up to council if there are anything else.
Um, yes, I think that, uh. We could do better enforcement of our speed limits if we had, have the appropriate studies that are done. And, uh, I. I'm wondering if we could have, um, a closed session to discuss this, uh. To, to understand it because it's, I, I believe it's worthy of a, of a closed session because it deals with public safety and I was in a public, in a closed session. With, uh, the VTA on security and it. I, I don't want to get into it now in, in a public forum, but I think it's worthy of a closed session so that we can understand it. And we could deal with it after that. As a, as an objective. But I've had people, uh. Complain to me and they're worried about their personal safety and their children, et cetera. And I think that in terms of Monteserino. We want to have a nice, peaceful place to live, safe place to live.
Typically closed session items are reserved for litigation, personnel issues and land use matters.
And this is a separate item. I looked into it and the city attorney may disagree with me on this, but public safety. Uh, is in there.
There is an exception for public safety in certain circumstances. Not knowing all the details of this, it's hard to say whether or not it's corporate. But staff will look into the issue and they'll get back to you.
Perfect. And was mentioned earlier by council member Beckencheck, speeding on highway nine. Are there other areas where speeding would be of concern? Are we talking about neighborhood speeding? Because highway nine is patrolled by technically, I guess, the CHP. Probably some areas, the sheriff's department and probably some areas partially by Los Gatos. If you have the chief nod.
We patrol the, um, whole stretch of highway nine. It's a surveyed area, so we do enforcement all along there.
Okay. So we do have our police department that does, does offer that. Um, but I guess, um, are there other streets or areas of concern that you've heard about? Um, that could potentially. Be addressed.
Right, I. If I may, if the chief of police could have a conversation with our city attorney to talk about what's required. Or enforcement in Monteserino without getting into neighborhood streets specifics. That's what I would ask for.
Okay, we will work on that for.
Perfect.
Alright. I think that's.
I want one more.
Sorry.
Um, I wanted to find out if you could develop information about, uh. A safe and effective evacuation as part of our community education plan for Monteserino. Provide information on evacuation preparation, the routes, shelter areas. How to receive notifications and other relevant topics like that. I know that the, the Monteserino Police Department has that. But it's, it's pretty general. It would be good if, if you could bring it down specifically for Monteserino.
Thank you for the question. So we do have a comprehensive, um. Emergency operations plan in the event of natural disasters or a number of other, uh, things that can occur unforeseen circumstances. And we do have, um, we, we actually are updating what we call, it used to be called Zone Haven. Our annex eight right now, and, um, we, we had a meeting about that a couple of weeks ago. Um, but all of these are handled at the county level with support of our local police and, um. I mean, it's just an awareness campaign. What?
Can you put the links on the website for, for those?
Yeah, we could do that. I think we have room on the website. In the past, we have, um, we do have a lot of links on our website. Already, uh, how to sign up for Alert SCC. Um, there's a number of programs for fuel reduction. The fire department will come visit your home and help you show, um. Uh, what do they call that space? Anyway, where you keep the flammables away from your structure, those kind of things, defensible space. Um, so we, there's a ton of information out there and all that. Getting the public engaged or to look at it is more, you know.
Yeah.
More challenging, obviously.
Yeah.
But it's all there.
Alright, thank you. I think that's it for the goal setting session. Any other suggestions, comments?
Uh, sure, I'll, I'll just make a, a final, from me, a final comment. Um, when I lived in Los Gatos for a couple of years, um. I joined a program called Leadership Los Gatos. And Leadership Los Gatos was put on at the time by the Chamber of Commerce, but also supported by the town of Los Gatos. And what it was, was I think it was eight weeks or ten weeks. And it was once a week, or sorry, eight months, and it was once a month on a Friday. And you'd spend four hours and it was to groom people and educate them so that they could sit on. The planning commission and other boards. And, and also if they wanted to receive counsel, so they understood the Brown Act and other things. I was so impressed with that. In fact, that's what I met Steve, Mr. Leonardi, because he. Gave me my certificate, uh, at the awards, uh, function. And, uh. I think that if the city of Monteserino, and this doesn't have to be on our strategic goals, but if, if we could look and see if. For the upcoming year in September, that the city of Monteserino could sponsor one or two people and, and, uh. If people, someone from Monteserino wants to attend, we would pay on their behalf. I think it's. It's a good path for them to become a council member and or to good, great training. Um, and the cost is, the value is, is in the, is, is essentially insurance because. They are more knowledgeable about how mechanics work. And that sort of thing. So I just wanted to bring that up. Maybe it's a council member comment, but as we're talking about. What we can do for our city, I think that would be really good to, to think about and.
We can, we can highlight that in one of our just letters, maybe.
Well, when you got, council would have to, or staff would have to work. To generate, to, to get a couple of spots, because you can't just have a Monteserino resident attend. One of these things, they have an application process and you have to apply for it.
Okay.
Right. Any other comments? In that case, we will move on with the rest of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is committee and commission reports, um, where council members, uh, report all the. Committees and commissions they, um, represent the city. Also, uh, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Well, thank you. Uh, so I attended a number of meetings since our last council meeting and start off with the youth commission. The youth commission is. Uh, going to, and I'm sure, I think in our city manager report, we'll probably hear more about it, but as you can see, one of our guests is a green and blue sign over there. And on April the twenty first, youth commission is going to host a. Cleanup day around Monteserino, so we'll be getting some information out there and we hope some council members will join us on the twenty first and.
Twenty first of?
April. Yeah, not, not day after tomorrow. Um, yes, and we're going to try to make it a little bit of an event, maybe try to get some kind of pizza or something for after the fact, but it would be something like a nine to one, nine to noon. Kind of thing. We don't want to take up your entire day, but that's pretty exciting. The youth commission is also going to start recruiting. This year's recipient for the social justice award. So the social justice award is given out to, um, a high school student. In the area based on projects and, and, um, and work that they've done in the area of. I'll, I'll call it social justice. It's a very broad, but basically ways that you are being helpful to the community. And the winner gets a five thousand dollars scholarship. Five, right? No, how much? I think, I don't think it's five.
Yeah, so one thousand.
Plus thousand, yeah.
And it's to the nonprofit of their choice.
Of their choice.
Doesn't go to them directly.
They don't get them. They get to tell us who to give it to. And, um, I just got five thousand on the brain all of a sudden. And, uh, let's see, what else? The, I attended a couple of meetings for council member Beckencheck. And I attended the VTA meeting, which again, they told us a whole bunch of stuff that. We don't participate in, like all of the money they're giving for valley VTA projects. Uh, that all seem to be in the east part of the county and the couple in the north. But probably the most interesting thing is the fact that they are going to sponsor a contest to see who can come up with. The coolest name for the boring head that's going to dig the tunnel between the Berriessa and, uh. And Caltrans station underneath San Jose. So, uh, talked about a number of measure B stuff and some of the monies that they spent promoting bicycle and pedestrian safety and. It was interesting. I haven't been to one of those meetings in a long time. Am I, am I missing anything? Is there anything else that you guys have been doing that they kind of just did those three things and said, alright? See you, see you next time. No, it's, yeah, it was pretty much a, a measure B day, yeah. Uh, and then I attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting where we were, um, sending, uh, the current. CEO Girish off to a fun life and retirement. But, uh, we did talk about a number of things there. Uh, let's see. Where is my S V C data? There we go, um. Well, we talked about the mid-year budget, which again is, uh, growing all the time. So these, these guys have. I remember when I first started with them, it was just a. Not even a hundred, hundred million dollar organization. Now we're talking into the hundreds of billions of dollars. Uh, talked about some of the, uh, programs that they are going to be putting money into. They want to expand single-family home electrification programs. They want to really talk about e-mobility incentives, workforce incentives, uh, commercial and industrial projects. So they're going to be putting some money into that and probably I think one of the more exciting items with that. Along with Peninsula Clean Energy, they are contracting with Franklin Energy Services to kind of give you a one-stop shop. On electrifying your home before you would. Find out about these rebates and you'd have to apply for them. Then you'd have to find a vendor. You have to find a vendor that knew how to deal with, with the rebates and. And then they have to give you the bill. You'd have to go see the rebate. Well, now they're just gonna make it all easy. And if you contract. Through Franklin Energy Services, it's literally, they're just gonna lock the, the, there's a rebate right off your bill and take care of it. So they're paying these guys fourteen million dollars, so it better be that year else. I would ask for some of that money back.
So really doing your solar installation and all that?
No, this is more for electrification, converting water heaters, uh, yeah, uh, gas water heaters, gas dryers, uh, stoves. Into induction, electrical dryers. They always say washer and dryer. I've never seen a gas washing machine though, but I guess somewhere one of those things exists. Um, but, but mostly for water heaters and, and home heating systems. They try to get going on heat pumps, which. Really the, the, the technology behind these things now is phenomenal and there's such a, a huge savings. And just the fact that you're going to be cutting out the use of all of the, um. Even, even, even just the, the silent leakage of gas these days is really, it's, it's now become measurable. So it's a great program and I hope that people take advantage of it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council over on line. Thank you. Uh, those productive week, week, I went to the. Vision's, uh. Retirement party also. Vision's around the job, so. And that organization, Silicon Valley Clean Energy was founded by this, uh, by the city's association, which, uh, Vice Mayor goes on at that time. So, uh, and those are the meetings that I found are very, very productive now. And this meeting that I paid that I attended, we had, uh, seven. Uh, this meeting, the RAP that I attended, we had seven men, Alex Love there and also Berman. We were talking about their federal legislation that they're doing. Uh, but somebody who is doing, uh, he calls it a porch bill, which is basically people who come to your porches and steal your packages and other things. And fairly normally the police would ignore that if it's a, just a one-time thing. But they try to make it so that if they file out, then they got the first, uh, motion. And the same man, Berman, has a AI bill where if you use AI to do child pornography, then that's going to be illegal. He's working on that one. Cause AI is a fairly, it's concerned about that because you can just, you know, under the existing laws, if there's no actual child here, you can only call it child pornography. But just AI, so he started to put that together. But there's a whole bunch of bills that are in, in session. I asked a clerk to go ahead and, um, send you a, so you'll have an attachment or, uh, from the Calhoun Cities. I've read over a few of those. I know what I'm giving you on that.
Part taken.
Yeah, part taken, decree, I guess. Uh, so, so basically the budget itself, uh, is now going to have a thirty-eight billion dollar deficit. As the governor estimates, the legislative, and it's hard to think it's going to be a seventy billion dollar deficit. So money that was going to come to something, because it's not coming, they're going to balance the budget by using the reserves and cutting out spending. Uh, there is a bill for, uh, uh, they would exempt new EU construction from property tax assessment for fifteen years from the date of completion or until the property sold. Uh, that's up there. There's another bill for, uh, enhancing sentencing for taking dis- damaging or destroying property in the commission or attempted commission of felony. There's some more bills against Armada Step for, uh, stealing from grocery stores and things of that sort. There's a bill also for making it a crime to loiter for the purpose of engaging in a prostitution offense. But it also provides that the clothes the person is wearing shall not solely determine whether a person is loitering or not. I guess I get into that.
A real fashion, please.
Yeah, it's a good pressure. Uh, there's also a measure that says, uh, cities and counties should post financial details about law enforcement, use of forced settlements and judgments on the internet websites. This is still bill spending, so they don't pass it, but that's what's coming down. Now, your official recognition is not going to be allowed. There's a bill that proves law enforcement agency or police officers are using official recognition technology generated matches as the sole basis for probable cause in the rest of it. So I guess if you use it as a secondary basis, but not as a sole cause. Uh, causing development projects, applications, fees. Uh, it requires local agency to provide an estimate of all taxes and fees within ten business days or request from a project applicant, applicant, applicant during the preliminary application process. So if we have to do it within ten days, probably, it would be faster than that, right? It's very good. Uh, we have another bill. Uh, it limits the ability of local governments to collect mitigation fees to either when a certificate of occupancy is issued or once construction commences, commences for the pro, for the project, the fees will be used for.
That works.
There's another bill that caps fees for electrical, gas or water services at one percent of the total billing permit value of new housing. Um, there's another one that says, uh, uh, it allows the builders remedy to begin as soon as the Department of Housing and Community Development or Corps determines that your station's housing element is out of compliance. And there's a bill on.
Who introduced that though?
Uh, that's from Alvarez, eighty-eighty-six. And there's another one on land use, uh, on ADUs. Requires local agencies to allow a minimum of two detached new construction ADUs on a multifamily dwelling. Unit and allow up to twenty-five percent of the existing lot to have ADUs on site. So you might be able to put more ADUs on these things now. I think that's it. There's also other bunches that I've covered.
Yeah, this is pretty long PowerPoint, but we have all of that actually as an attachment.
Yeah, that's, I would, I would.
It breaks it down a little bit more, so.
Wow. And they presented that whole thing at the legal city?
Uh, they didn't present the whole thing. I mean, this was said after that, but she, but Tina Valio was in the chair. She hit some of the highlights in her way, which is kind of what I'm, right? So then she mailed this out to the, to the.
So it seems like procrastinating on building your A T U, A T U, the A T U become more beneficial.
These baskets. And two thousand bills, probably, I think, yeah, a hundred million or so.
All right.
It's a hundred, thank you.
So then Turner, I think.
So, uh, BTA Vice Mayor Craig, uh, reported on that. I was unable to attend. Uh, West Valley Clean Water, uh, there is nothing to report, uh, since we haven't met. Uh, West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. April the ninth, we're having a, um, a field trip to see the organic waste, uh, processing, the, uh, recycling plant and the, uh, solid waste. So that will be a full day April ninth. And then Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Craig for attending on my behalf.
Send me those things anytime they're retiring a CEO.
I am meeting, I'm having dinner with Girish tomorrow night. Okay, I thought it'd be very good to, uh, make sure that, uh, we show our appreciation.
Right, that's it. Um, I have, really have nothing to report. None of the committee so forth that I, um, represent the city and had, had meetings. So I have nothing to report. Councilmember comments? And the comments on. Anything?
Well, I, I wanted to say Steve did a good job of representation and putting it together. I know last time you spent, well, I don't know, I'm looking, I'm looking like you spent last time. Professional person come in and help us with the strategy goals. And, um, we, we, we decided it would be better for, that's, that's good for that.
Yes, well, in the past, you know, a consultant was hired facilitator essentially, but we opted out of that last year and this year. So we saved four or five thousand dollars a year when doing that.
And I think it goes a bit faster. It was good to see you, love. The people show up. But thank you all, thank you all for coming. I think it was really nice. But that's very helpful to us. And hopefully you show up at all the meetings.
We put fog on every meeting, so you guys.
But, uh, but that's helpful.
Needs to be a housing element, bro. Oh, it's flock cameras.
Well, the housing element is another story, but, um, my comment would really be, I think we, we need to keep control of the finances. I think the investment comment was a poor grade. But I think you've been very conservative on that. Hopefully the Treasury is not going to report on us, but. What's, what's your question? Uh, so let's, uh, keep this going. Let, let, let's get the finances approved as soon as possible. I know also Max check is not boarding, but he's not comfortable with some of the stuff because I think he's got a, immediate CPA special. So whatever we can do to get active participation on that, get the finance committee. Who, who's on the finance, I think it's, it's Mayor Bushauer and, uh, yeah, so, so if you guys get a chance to look at those things, we can, we can, that would be great. That was the comment.
Any other comments? Uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I was going to speak about the free wood chipping program that our fire department offers. They will come to your home. They will chip your logs and your, uh, branches and things. Uh, again, it's about that defensible space. They will also consult with you on your property, uh, what to cut, where it needs to be cut and those type of things if you need some assistance. Um, and I wanted to also mention, was just, uh, browsing through our city website. We have an extensive amount of information under the residence bullet. Anything from, you know, search, of course, which we discussed earlier, to, to our public safety entities, neighborhood watch programs, uh, safety classes, uh, everything you want to know about fire and, and, uh, classes offered. Um, you know, what kind of supplies you need in the event of emergency, how to protect yourself, personal emergency preparedness. It's just, uh, the list goes on and on, mental health resources, et cetera, et cetera, as well as access to all the city services that we provide. So, um, please visit our website if you haven't lately and check out the links, uh, under the residence bullet. Um, you'll be amazed at all the good information on there and what, uh, classes are offered through the County of Santa Clara and the emergency, um, agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Councilmember, any suggestions, requests for future agenda items?
Oh, I, I, I hear you're going to bring the housing element. As a future agenda item at some point. So that's, that's a good, keep going. And then the community center. Over, you've got to build out so they'll come, they'll come up automatically. So it would, it would be good to see.
And I, I will just make an assumption that the block camera will be very soon. So we can make sure to get it on the budget for next year.
Next year, yeah.
I was going to, uh, ask, rather than saying something tonight, is this our only timer or can I email something to, uh, the city manager? If there's something that I'd like to see on a future agenda, or are we limited to, to tonight?
Councilmembers can, um, essentially email us anytime. And we can add, you know, to the schedule. The mayor, of course, sets the agenda when it will be. But we can add agenda items, you know, according to the way sixteen ninety-seven works, our charter, the rules and regulations, and we just modified that recently. Any council member could put any item on the agenda anytime. But, you know, within reason, you can't come the day before a meeting and say, hey, I want to something. And I think you're all very good about that. Um, but, you know, we, like, for instance, at one of our previous meetings, two meetings ago, you brought up the idea about the CPUC representation. We got it on, you know, at the very earliest opportunity. So we're very, um, very good about getting those on. And if it's something that we can just fix at a staff level, like a task, then sometimes it, you know, doesn't need to be agendaized. But we do everything we can to accommodate.
So answer your question.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah, what I wanted to see in a future agenda item is, is the data integrity of the surveys that we have. What is the database that you use whenever you get a survey? I want to make sure that we're not using Nextdoor because there's so many scammers on Nextdoor. And I want to make sure that when we're taking a survey, we're really looking at the residents of Monte Sereno. Not Los Gatos, not Saratoga, Monte Sereno.
Unless there's anything else. At this point, we will recess to a closed session.
Um, would you like to open to the comment, um, for the R O session item? Which would be, um, conference with legal counsel, with instant litigation, government co-section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, case name, uh, Pageant versus, uh, Curtis Wright. Uh, case number five, zero, four, C B, zero, three, nine, four, six. Where we will have city attorney and city manager present.
All right. Is there anybody here in chambers who wants to comment on that item?
We have a reader.
I see, uh, computer. This is a litigation item which will be, uh, discussed in closed sessions. But if anybody in the, uh, public here has any, any comments on that item, that there is.
This is happening in the back. Very end of agenda.
Uh, anybody online? Okay. In that case, we will recess to closed session. Take a few minutes break.
We are back.
We are back online. We finished our closed session, case number government, sorry, government code section five four nine five six dot nine. We just finished the closed session and there is nothing to report about the session. And then so we're back in the regular council meeting now. And we have nothing further on the agenda, so I will adjourn the session at ten eleven P M. Which for me is six.